I call to order the Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting of May 1st, 2012. First order of business is a pledge of allegiance.
Knudsen.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Bryson.
Kid.
Here.
Fearborn. Shannon.
Here.
Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
Oh, there aren't.
Okay. You've all received a copy of the minutes of April 17, 2012. And I do have a change on it, which is kind of a first. I was here and I'm not on the roll.
I'm so sorry.
Ah, okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of April 17, 2012 with that correction?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The minutes for April 17 have been approved. Okay. For four, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items and agenda items six, seven, or eight? And there's no public. So, we'll move on to item five. There are no final orders or resolutions. You have been given written communication from Kent Ray Seda, and he's requesting a continuance of SUB 2011-01, the Baldy Creek Park subdivision. He's requesting a continuance to September 18, 2012, and he's tolling the 120-day processing time. Do we have a motion?
I think just as a matter of procedure, what you need to do is go down to the next agenda item, which is the hearing that's scheduled for that.
Okay.
Then move for, ask for a movement, a motion for continuance to September 18 at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. Public hearings, we had one scheduled, and he's requesting a continuance. Is that good enough? Do I need to say all the words again?
I think you probably need to read what it is, what the...
Okay.
Or if you'd like me to, I will.
Oh, no. I'm good.
It's, file, SUB 2011-01, Kent Ray Seda, request for tentative approval of an eight-lot residential subdivision, tentatively identified as Baldy Creek Park subdivision for property on Southwest Coast Avenue at the intersection with Southwest 29th Street in the Nelskott Neighborhood. The applicant is Kent Ray Seda, and the property owners are Kent R. Seda and Mary M. Seda.
Thank you. So now I request a motion.
That would be appropriate.
I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue with the file 2011-01 meeting until September the 18th, 2012.
We have a second?
Second.
That's at 6:00 P.M. at this location?
Yep.
We have a roll call, please?
All right, Knudsen.
Yes.
Kid.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
And Shannon.
Yes. Okay. Old business, there is none. New business, tonight we're going to discuss street vending and food cart, food vendor carts first, 8.1.
There's been some interest expressed lately by a couple of people about establishing food carts, such as we allow in the ordinance now, or, well, your street vendors. And I'll get into that a little bit in the course of presentation, and others interested in food carts, such as you might typically see in Portland. And I wanted to bring that up to you all to see what concerns you have. It's also going to be discussed by the city council as well, but I wanted to get the planning commission's feedback. Our ordinance that we have in place right now was first adopted in 1982. At that time, it said maximum cart size of three and a half by six feet, and established insurance requirements and set a few areas where they were to be allowed. Later that year, they expanded the areas where the food carts would be allowed, to include the public right-of-way and private property in the G.C. and R.C. zones and city parks and so on. It was prohibited within 250 feet, or 250 yards of the Curtis Ball Field, and in, prohibited in state parks or waysides, except by state permit. In '93, it was amended again, increased the insurance requirements to, now it's basically a half million dollars insurance with the city as an additional insured. And then the maximum cart size was increased to the current four feet by eight feet. More amendments in '93, prohibited vending in Curtis Park and Ball Field, rather, they went in 250 yards. Actually, within 250 yards would take you to basically the back of the community center. And so it's a pretty good distance away. And they also modified the distance from a restaurant, saying they must be at least 50 feet from the customer entrance unless it's on private property owned by the license holder. And what happens is, is people can apply for a vending cart license from the planning department, and it has to be signed off by the planning director, the building official. County health has to approve a lot of them, depending on what they're selling. And they say, normally they say where they're going to operate, but actually they can operate anywhere on city streets or on private property with the permission of the property owner. We had a separate regime of, for these vending carts set up for the Taft Village Core Zone, set a maximum of 10 of them allowed in the Taft Village Core, and had some other requirements that basically duplicated what was permitted in the rest of the city. The only place that anybody ever expressed interest in putting in food carts, or street vendor carts in Taft was in the, at the turnaround at the end of 51st Street, which is not in the Taft Village Core Zone, it's in the park zone. So, we recently suggested, and you and the council agreed, to basically do away with the duplication of having two sets of rules for vending carts in the city and just go back to having one, which was the citywide one, slightly different from the Taft one. But this is the idea, this is what was, this was what was in the Taft ordinance, it had, this is illustrative of what people were picturing as food carts at the time. You see, we haven't had very many of them. In the eight years between 1999 and 2000, there were 10 food vendors, 11 non-food vendors. We haven't issued any licenses since 2006. Perhaps not coincidentally, the farmer's market has existed since 2006, and there is always the possibility of having more than one farmer's market in the city. Currently, we have one.
Benefit to the farmer's market may be also that they don't need to get a separate vendor license, they don't need to get the city's occupation tax permit, so it's a little more affordable to do it that way, and they have a guaranteed audience.
It's in itself an attraction, so, across, I think you said, 2,000 people?
There have been some weekends, 2,000 and 3,000 people come through the market in the high time of the summer. So, busy place.
We have some examples of some carts, these happen to be in Portland. I think, I think in general, these carts would meet our standards here in Lincoln City. This is at Pioneer Courthouse Square. You can see, they're not that big. These, what concerns me is sort of the spillover. The cart themselves are fine, but then there's the ice chests and the shelves and so on. We would not allow those in the city, in Lincoln City. And we had, in the past, we've actually had someone say, "Well, can I have my four-by-eight foot cart with my van parked next to it? And, you know, just be taking stuff out of the van to sell on the cart?" And we said, "No, it's not meeting the intent of our street vendor permits." And these are others that, these are, again, in Portland, this is kind of, it's not allowed in Lincoln City right now, the larger vehicles that are used for food carts. One thing is, food carts are kind of in vogue right now. There are a lot of them in Portland, they get a lot of attention, there's websites all about them, Portland Monthly had an all, a whole issue about them. The American Planning Association Annual Convention was last month, and they had a lot of sessions and a whole tour of the food carts in Los Angeles. They're just considered quite, quite popular, quite, quite the thing. There are concerns about them. By their nature, how they sell the food, they generate trash because it's just being handed over in, you know, paper, or plastic, or cardboard, or whatever. There's carnival atmosphere concern. And then there, what you hear a lot of is sort of the lack of investment in the community, where they just come in with a minimal investment vehicle, they come in, set up, and don't have a brick-and-mortar facility. You know, they're not subject to the same sort of financial pressures that a business occupying an actual building face. So that ends up perhaps increasing the amount of vacant commercial space, because rather than rent or buy a building, they'll just set up on a parking lot somewhere. And there may be other concerns, too. I don't, I'm sure there are.
And these concerns could apply to larger, to food trucks, to the larger carts and to the smaller carts. So they're similar concerns regardless of the size.
Then there are what we require for these larger ones. If you want to do it, technically, they're allowed, but subject to all kinds of restrictions, you need a building permit for placing them, has to be a restroom facility, connection to sewer water and electric. And one of the big things with food carts is, what happens to the gray water? When you're washing your cooking utensils or whatever, does it just go on the ground? How does it get to the, get to the proper treatment and so on? It must be an ADA, it must be accessible, ADA accessible, which usually means a ramp, they have to go through site plan review, and our, they have to comply with our commercial design standards, and comply with our parking and landscaping requirements, sign limitations, health department regulations, and so on. So it, what we have now allows them technically, but probably deters them. Some examples of Portland food carts, you can see, for instance, they would have a bit of an issue on complying with design standards, because they're basically just vans or trailers that are backed up to the sidewalk. One positive thing about them is that they create activity on the street. And they can take what's just basically a parking lot, which is sort of a deterrent to pedestrian activity and make it an active part of the community. Another view of the same area. More of the same, you can see, I mean, I think this was just when they're starting to open, I think these were taken on Saturday, you know, just starting to open, but they already had people down there ready to buy up. So sort of the other side of them, you can see the back of them, that they're on the perimeter of a parking lot. And this actually is an aerial, you can see, this is downtown Portland, you can see, these are all food carts along the left edge of the, of the parking lot. And it's one way, actually, that also that a property owner can make a little bit more money off his property by renting the space to food vendors. So we're not proposing any amendments or any, anything like that at this time, I just wanted to bring it up because there has been interest, and it was an unusual interest, where someone came in and, as far as the, the street vendor things, the four-by-eight things, "I want to put 10 of them in Taft." And somebody else at almost exactly the same time said, "I want to put 10 food carts on a piece of property." And, you know, nothing, nothing like either of those has come up, and to have them both come up at the same time, we're thinking, this is something that should get some exposure and some attention, so we're bringing them here. And if you have comments, concerns?
Well, I do, yeah. One thing that I ran into when I was building my café was, I ran into restroom requirements that said if I had more than 15 people on premises, I had to have a second bathroom, and that included staff. Now, we don't seem to have anything that says, "Okay, if you attract 30 or 40 people, how many facilities do you need?" You know, at what point do we say, if we have 10 food carts and each of them attracts three people, we're at 30, not including staffing, we're over that limit? That I'm up against as a building owner. Do we address that? Do we say, "How many we can have on a 50-by-100 lot?" Do we just max it out like that in a parking lot and just wedge them in side by side? And does that meet what we want the city to look like? You know, with the technicolor booths side by side, with the doors open and the coolers and the trash cans, and outhouses lining the street? Those are just my concerns about that. And I also, I kind of, I'm not sure how to phrase this. When the comment is brought up that it encourages foot traffic, and that's a good thing, and I kind of see what's being said. We see foot traffic, but there are still restaurants around that that are within buildings that people are still going to walk to, but just because we don't see them lining up outside a cart doesn't mean that foot traffic isn't there. Just want to make sure we're not confusing the two, just because we can see them and they're standing there for a half hour, doesn't mean that traffic didn't exist.
So I have a question. When the people that are asking for 10 food carts on a piece of property, are they expecting those food carts to be open seven days a week? Are they aiming for weekends? Because we do have the farmer's market there, which is a draw.
You can answer that later, you talked to them.
Yeah, I mean, without identifying where or any specifics, because we don't really have any. I think the idea behind the inquiry was during the better time of the year. And they mentioned five months out of the year, which I think is probably optimistic. But I think it probably would be seven days a week, subject to weather.
I've got a comment. Well, I'm a business owner, but not in Lincoln City, but in Depot Bay, and there is five months out of the year I can survive. It's the other seven that you really have to struggle to keep your head afloat, and I still have to pay my lease those seven months. I still have my overhead those seven months, and as a, somebody that lives or has a business in a static location, brick-and-mortar location, as you put it earlier, they've got to survive through those off months, where the other people just pull out, leave, come back in May, June, which is where we need to survive from. So it's, I, you know, have a bit of heartache with that, you know. Somebody that lives here, works here, owns businesses or runs businesses here, they're here year-round, and they've got their time to struggle. And they, they need those five months, too.
I don't own a business here in town, but I agree completely with the previous two sentiments about the need to support the local restaurants. I think in this type of ordinance, we're actually shooting ourselves in the foot as a community. And I'll be explicit about it. I think it is running contrary to the design standards we'd like to see. I think it makes the area transient and trashy. And I think if we really wanted to do something that bootstrap local restaurants, local employment, local tax base, we would do something to encourage the local restaurants during that five months to be able to expand out of doors, externally if they wished, to make more of a café atmosphere that could attract that foot traffic, rather than creating something that essentially takes money out of their pockets and encourages that sort of, I don't know. It's, you know, I'm very familiar with the food carts in Portland, I mean, I've seen them, I know where they're located, I know how they operate, you know, having been around them. And I'm not sure that that's consistent with what we'd like to see. I think we've got something on the books, I would even go so far as to say, "Do we even need to have this on the books? Should we be encouraging port of the farmer's market and the local restaurants and just say, 'No, we don't need to encourage this other element that is really not going to add to the substantive base of the community.'"
I'd have to agree that I didn't care for the look of the parking lot with the food cart, little group of food carts backed up to it. I'd rather support our existing local community and the farmer's market.
Well, I went, I went back in the record to see, why do we even have an ordinance that allows this in the first place, back in 1982 and in the minutes of the city council? I think it was as simple as someone asked them if they could. And they wanted to do it, and they said, "Well, okay, but here's some rules." And then they evolved over time to refine them, to say where they could be and couldn't be, and the insurance. So I don't think it was the city thinking it was a great idea back in 1982, I think it was just a citizen request.
I think if it was, in effect, inadvertent legislation, that if we're now being asked for a more considered approach, that we probably would want to say, "Maybe not." You know, we've had our experiment with it, it didn't work out particularly well, we have a lot of vacant storefronts, we have a lot of vacant restaurant space, we have a lot of struggling restaurants, we have a lot of unemployment, local unemployment. Doesn't argue very strongly for diluting that even further. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I see this as somebody coming in, you know, quick buck and then leaving. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. I see people from outside the community coming in. I agree with the comment that was made, it'd be nice if some of these local businesses could move outdoors a little bit when the weather gets nice. Because we're shut, shut in during the bad weather, it's hard to attract people when the doors are closed, the wind is blowing, the rain's coming down. You know, spring, summer comes around, the doors open up, you know, we look like we're alive and well, but we've been there the whole time.
Well, you know, I was even going further to say that perhaps encouraging more of a European approach, allowable approach to the restaurants operating outside their front doors and attracting foot traffic.
If we do allow that in Taft right now, I don't think we have anything for Nelskott or Ocean Lake.
Well, I think, you know, that...
We could.
Yeah, you know, I'd be very much in favor of that, because number one, we've got existing space that, you know, more and more of it seems to be becoming vacant. If we could encourage that use such that the owners have more of an opportunity to prosper during those four or five months of good foot traffic, then I think that'd be really helpful. I think that would encourage others to come in and begin to fend off some of those issues that I suggested in the earlier email today about, you know, properties becoming vacant, rundown, and whatnot.
Does any of this apply to concessions for parks, like you've mentioned Curtis, where they have the Boosters Club? Does that, that, because they have a standing building?
Yeah, now, that's...
Didn't exist, could they bring a wagon on?
No, they couldn't. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, no, they could not.
What about the food vendors for Soapbox Derby and so forth?
That kind of thing, if there's, when there's a special event and they get, you get a permit for a special event, you know, you can include various things under the umbrella of that, of that thing, and like with specific reference to the Soapbox Derby, yes, well, there are some vendors permitted for that now.
And the kite festivals and so forth, so, help with those.
Right, yeah. That's different, though, I mean, that's not, I mean, setting up constantly.
That's just a short-term, temporary...
Special event.
Adding some convenience to the event.
Right. Wouldn't want to go that direction, where we deny people that ability.
Correct. Definitely want to keep that in force, and allow those things to happen.
You think of like the Brew Festival that the Chamber of Commerce started putting on, you know, and they have food vendors and beer vendors and so on set up, and they're 10-by-10 tents, and that's...
I think, I think there's a world of difference between Waterfront Park in Portland, where they have, you know, the Bite of Portland, or something like that, or those type of events which are analogous to our kite festival or something, or, as you say, the Brew Festival, versus building up a level, an additional level of competition, which we don't really need right now.
There's a lot of difference between a one-time event and five months.
Let me ask, would the commission favor something that specifically prohibits them? Right now, I mean, if someone was willing to make the investment, I doubt anybody would be, but if someone was willing to make the investment, they could, they could do it.
Personally, I think this is one of those codes that I would prefer not to have on the books. I'd prefer to see a prohibition, and I would prefer to see the reciprocal in the books, which encourages more extensive use of our existing restaurant resources.
Not to say it couldn't change down the road, you know, maybe down the road, things are going to be all rosy again, but right now, certainly under this economy where everybody's struggling a little bit, I think having that transient competition's going to be difficult for any business owner, no matter what they might be selling. You know, 10, 10 years down the road, we might be able to say, "Hey, everybody's fat and happy, let's go ahead and allow carts." But meantime, I think it's, it's a tough pill to swallow.
Right.
So I recall last time we talked about this, when Don brought it up at the previous meeting, you said you might, did I understand that you said you might be interested in having a cart affiliated with your business at some point? having a cart affiliated with your business at some point?
Yeah, I considered that, just as, you know, because I'm, I'm in that building and I know that there's, say, I'm in Nelscott and I know that we have two beach accesses. And I thought, well, I could just go right down there with a bicycle and, and pedal ice cream products, just like that, be no problem. But again, I'd still have my investment in the community, be transient, hit that, hit that. So you're saying you're in favor of being, because I guess, I was just trying to work within what we have.
Right. Because I, I mean, one thing, I completely, I, I agree with what everybody on, on the council is saying, but one thing I was wondering is, we're making the assumption that these people coming in with these permits are outsiders and probably most of them will be, but I, I was thinking that. What about the local businesses, local restaurants who do want to have their own cart? I mean, maybe, maybe Don or, or another business wants to put a cart somewhere else to capture some traffic in the, in, in the Taft area and, and advertise their business at the same time. And we're, I think if we just go a blanket prohibition on this, we're going to actually wipe that out, that opportunity out as well, if, you know.
So maybe that becomes an adjunct use to the original permit. I like that one.
I have a quick question on that. You're talking about on a bicycle paddling, that's not a fixed food cart.
Right, no, I'm absolutely not even discovering that.
Totally different.
Yeah, not at all. And that's, that's why I was a little bit, when I saw what you put up here, Richard, I was, I was pleased that there was more of a mobile characteristic to it, that this is not going to be sitting on blocks and going to have gray water and the like. It's that, I, I'm, I'm okay with that personally, it's just, I know it's just transient, it's only a different hour or two and everyone's fine. It's when those carts get set up permanently.
Yeah. The four by, four by eight carts, the things we allow now on streets and so on, have to be wheeled. Let me ask you something. You, you mentioned in, in Nelscott, you know, there's that Scott Plaza there, the new deck area that was built. And then in, in Ocean Lake during the urban renewal process, you know, they closed off two streets and created little plazas or something. What do you think about allowing or, or even encouraging those kinds of carts in those spaces?
I think if you define those kinds of carts as being able to be moved by a person, location to location, push cart, then I have less of an objection to that. In other words, you're using the hot dog vendor in New York City model as opposed to the Portland four by eight trailer that is semi-permanent. And then that, you've still got the option for the local businesses to take some of their product, push it out someplace close, a park or something, and do something with it. And it's, becomes, as I say, an adjunct use to their existing business and encourage it.
Okay. Now, can these carts sell between point A and point B or only when they arrive at point B, which says maybe the Taft turnaround or something? If they're pushing on down the road?
Seemably, they could, they could sell anywhere on public streets, on private property with the permission of the owner, and in certain parks.
In areas that are zoned for it.
So we could get an ice cream, you know, the little buggies that used to go around the neighborhoods with ice cream with the music playing and stop and sell to the kids along the route.
Yeah, if you think of like the Good Humor Man, the type of thing, actually, we don't allow those.
Right.
The bicycle thing you're talking about, I think would meet the, the standard for the, the, the street vendors that we have, that we allow now, the four by eight, maximum four by eight feet, that would, that's the kind of thing that could be licensed. And, and I'm speaking off the top of my head, you're, you're raising, I heard about, maybe just, you know, people who already have a business in Lincoln City could be able to, could be able to do street vendors. And I don't know that about this for sure, I have to think about it and look into it, but I think there might be an equal protection issue there.
Yeah, I would think so.
No, I think there's, there, there may be equal protection issues, but I think you can do some of that under the licensure of restaurants and make it this plus that as a part of the licensing process. If you choose to use it, you can do this in addition to having your fixed base operation.
Now, some communities just say, okay, we're going to allow, and we sort of did this in the Taft model, we're going to allow X number of these at any given time. And you can come in and buy the permit. You know, we, I think, what's our fee? It's like $25 or something?
It's not much. You have to get a business license to do that.
Yeah, okay. But, but some communities, especially resort communities, they'll say, you know, you can buy this and it's $1,000 and it's good for a year. And then next year, you know, you come in, and actually, some places have lotteries for them. But, but the end, I think one of the main features of it is it's capped at a really low number. Like, right now, we have no cap. We, we've never had a cap. But you could cap it at a low number and then sell the permits.
Well, that, that may be, that may be another alternative, since we cap it at a low, low enough number, make it portable or mobile-
Right.
Such that the result is that, you know, we encourage some amount of growth, but we don't have growth just for growth's sake, which is what we've got now, which if we had 10 or 20 of those food carts relatively fixed operations, you know, my guess is that, that we would lose a lot of our existing restaurants pretty quickly because they, they just dry up and go away for the winter period.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I just, I barely hang on through the winter. I mean, it's, I'm dipping into reserves. And if I, if it got any worse, I'm, I'm closing up. Honestly, if it's, it's a matter of, you know, if someone leeching off another $100 a day from me, that's, that's going to make the difference whether I stay open or don't. And that's five employees that are going to lose their jobs.
I'm not hearing much support for-
Well, why did they go to a four by eight originally? Do you, do you want to cater?
It was, um, they started out with the smaller size and then a few years later went to a bigger size because someone came to the city and said that was now the industry standard. It was probably what you could purchase easier, so they changed it.
Got that sheet applied with the specific-
Exactly.
Well, I guess-
Specifically talking about food carts here and not a vendor cart, are we talking about both?
Could be any kind. Any kind of street vending.
Okay. Because we're, because we're talking a lot about restaurants and stuff, but I didn't know if that was different, if somebody was going to sell on bracelets or beads or-
Yeah, I looked to see what the others were, the other non-food vendors. There were crafts, sunglasses, which makes sense from time to time, face painting, flowers.
Some of those, I'm not sure. I mean, that's why I was wondering if we could, if there's a way to separate, because like face painting, I, I, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I think if someone was painting, you know, kids' faces at the beach during the summer or something, I don't know that they're taking away from another existing business in town. And, and they might be, I don't know if, if there's another that does that, but, um, so I don't know if maybe we would entertain separating out food carts versus something else, or is that put too much of a burden on the city that they're actually selling?
Potentially, although, you know, we, we hear pretty quickly when something's happening. I like the, talking about the sunglasses, that, that was when I first came here, the sunglass people, and that was just a nightmare to deal with. Because they, they didn't want to comply with the, the four by eight size, they wanted to do 10 by 10, um, all kinds of, of problems. And it was just, I think they lasted very briefly and just realized they just couldn't make it under our, our standards. But it was, it was, it was a lot of enforcement with that.
You know, we've, we've got this other vested interest for the city called the Cultural Center. The Cultural Center is subject to some amount of serious subsidization by the city on an ongoing basis, I believe. It would seem to me that, you know, again, if we're talking about expanding uses and supporting indigenous business, that rather than encourage more fragmentation, that we would encourage another day or two of the week for the farmer's market during those, those solid periods in the summer. We've got the space, we've got the capital investment. God knows they need more money coming into that so that they can support that building and not have it revert. You know, again, I think rather than doing one thing and then moving on, I think we ought to do one thing and make sure it's on absolutely solid ground before we dilute it with other kinds of activities. We've got, you know, it's, it's great to keep going forward, but sometimes you've got to look over your shoulder and see what's sneaking up on you.
I agree. I like to build that foundation, especially the Cultural Center and the Community Center. I'd love to see those strong and actually independent before we start spreading out any further.
We used to have a food cart at the factory stores way back when.
Right, I remember that.
I can't remember if it was a satellite of one of the two food vendors over in the corner or not.
I think it was.
I think it was also.
Coffee shop.
You know, they had the mobile, mobile cart that they used to roll around over by what's now, yeah, up the hill slightly from what's Nike now. I don't know whatever happened to that. I'm sure they were really, really busy during spring and summer. Not sure what happened to it. I know where it sits right now, but I don't know why it's no longer functioning.
Well, we could base them in Cutler City and make them have to push them to Taft. Those that survive win.
I think instead of totally eliminating, I'd like to see it limited to the smaller size and have to be pushable by a single person. About my size, weak.
So they arrive in the morning and they leave when they close?
Yes.
So they're not remaining?
Exactly. They, they are never on the street. They are, they're during the daylight hours only and that leaves it open for restaurants to be able to expand a little bit in that direction and doesn't totally cut off our noses despite our faces, maybe. I just don't like those big ones that are there permanently.
The roach coach look, as I call it.
We have had inquiries about the, the roach coaches, too. Always had to say no, not allowed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess we're ready to move on to 8.2, discussion of the tsunami hazard areas. Hello?
Hello.
Okay, let's see here. Last time, we started a discussion about tsunami areas in town and how we were planning for the event of a tsunami and whether or not we should be doing more in that regard. I offered as a beginning to take a look at the zoning we have in the city as it relates to tsunami areas. And our GIS person, Sandy Gruber, did put together a map to, so that I could show these to you. She made four smaller maps that you got in your packet, I believe. This is all one map and, but she wanted me to make sure to caution you that the layers that, that show tsunami and show zoning do not perfectly overlay each other. So there is some error here. This is just basically a general idea of where we are. And also, she asked me to mention that our building layer that shows, and I'm just showing the buildings in these, in this dark color, is from 2001, so clearly it's not showing all of our recent development. Having said that, I thought maybe we just start at the north end of town and I could have started at the south end because that's where I was, but I'm a creature of habit, so up here in Rhodes End. Now, what I asked, we tried different overlays to show the tsunami, but it just seemed to clutter up the map. So what is showing the tsunami is just this broken line here, black and white line that runs down the coast. So anything west of this line would be the tsunami area. Basically, our tsunami area is at the coast, around the lake, and then in areas that are low-lying, such as Schooner Creek. So I'll just kind of scroll through that. And I, I do want to say, too, that we'll follow this up with, we're going to have a speaker from Dogami come next meeting. And Richard and I had been to a coastal planners conference in the last, since we last met and heard an excellent presentation we thought was just perfect, but that person apparently is not available anymore. So, so we've got someone in his place and, and I think it should be very informative. He said he would cover the same material we, we saw. And also, I want to mention that Patrick had mentioned Althea last time, and I, I want to follow up with you outside the meeting to talk about what exactly you liked about the presentation, because we do have a replacement for Althea here, Deborah Smith. And I think she has the same kind of information and we can get her to share that with us, too. So.
That, that would be fine.
Okay.
Just as long as the information is there and-
Right.
-it's available, whether it's Althea or Deborah or Richard or yourself, I, it makes no difference.
All right. Okay, so in Rhodes End, we don't have any, any city zoning to share with you, so this just shows you the buildings and the tsunami line.
First, first question, clarify what the contour is in terms of above mean sea level there. Your dotted line represents how many feet above mean sea level?
Okay, well, we can put that on. It might take a minute. And that does vary, you know, throughout town. But we will, these are the contours. When it, there.
Okay.
Yeah, I might have to zoom in here a little bit to see what elevation we're at. Okay, in this area of Rhodes End, it varies from, it's five-foot contours, so this is a 60-foot up here, down here, the tsunami inundation area shows at 75-foot elevation. Down here, it's about 60, so there's some variation.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'll turn off the contours unless you want to see something specifically because it takes a long time to load, so. Okay, so anyway, let's get our, I've zoomed in here a lot, so let me zoom back out a bit. All right, so I'll just move this around a little bit so you can see what, what the situation is here. Gets more interesting when we get down to our city property. Over here, we are moving into the villages of Cascade Area and Northern Lincoln City. And of course, this is all far removed from the inundation area. So I will zoom out a little bit more and we can move down the coast until we get to the lake and then we'll go across to the lake and see how that area is affected. Zoom out a little bit more so you, if I zoom out too far, then you lose the detail, but you get the, the bigger picture, so if you want to see something specifically, just let me know. The tsunami area does not extend too much beyond the edge of the lake, but in some areas it does. This is just north of Holmes Road, we have an area where it, it is more inland from the lake, and that is zoned RM, which is multifamily. A lot of that is already developed. Actually, that is, unless it would redevelop, it's not going to get any more dense, extending down the lake. And of course, we can talk about east Devil's, Devil's Lake Road, the east side of the lake as well, but we don't have zoning there either. It's not in, included in the city right now.
It begins to get a little more interesting as you go down toward D River.
Right. When you get to the D River, then you've got a lot- When you get to the D River, then you've got a lot of area that is included in the, in the tsunami inundation area. This whole area in here that's outlined by this and the outline, of course, extends, extends across the lake. But we do have quite a bit of the oceanfront and First Street Northeast, First Street Southeast. And a lot of that is zoned for recreation, commercial or general commercial. And when you get down here in the multifamily, south of the D River, it's, it's outside of the inundation zone, fortunately, so.
It's outside of the 60-foot or so.
Well, the inundation zone ends right here. See the little hand here?
Deborah, can I just ask a question? Because I'm kind of new to all this. When you say inundation, inundation, what exactly does that mean?
Well, the expectation is, there's an evacuation zone that extends a little bit further, but this is where they actually spend that wall, expect that wall of water to reach.
And again, to reach would mean how high or do we have a?
I imagine at the, and maybe, maybe our expert can tell us this next time, but I imagine that it dissipates by the time it gets to the edge of the zone. But my understanding from the, it's not like a flood that, you know, comes up and down, but I mean, it's actually a wall of water that's moving. When it gets into the lake and how it affects the lakeshore after it turns the corner, you know, I don't know what the hydrology is behind that.
We could expect it to have an adverse effect on the physical property.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
First wave's not always the worst.
Right. Yeah, I'm just trying to determine what these words mean. Is it, you know, does it just get wet? Is it flooded? Is it wiping out property? Is it moving with a surge enough to?
The speaker. It would depend on the.
It depends.
The severity.
Depends on the elevation of the property.
Sure.
And so the, the lower it is, the higher the water's going to be. Like, I know, looking in, in the part of Rhodes End where I live, three houses down from me, it's supposed to, supposed to be at the edge of the inundation zone and they're about 10 feet lower than I am, but they're, they're at the edge, but you going down further, you know, they're going to be under increasing amounts of water because they're lower and lower and lower.
Right, right.
And by the way, the, no, extreme amount horizontal going to that house that's below you, probably put it in your backyard.
Right. Yeah, all the debris that is carrying with it from, from those lower houses is going to come in too and the cars and whatever else. I mean, you see all the pictures from Japan.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I just want to have a clear understanding because sometimes when government talks about things, wetlands becomes, from a puddle goes to a wetlands and I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding of what we're talking about here.
Okay, well, but I did, I do have the wetlands on here as a matter of fact. This is in the striped area. Typically, the wetlands are in a low area, which also would be subject to the tsunami inundation. I'm going to take that off and then you'll just see the, that the elevations in this area around the D River are 15, 20 feet, maybe up in this area. So fairly low compared to the, the, most of our coast has a bluff and so the elevation changes quickly. But in this area, so you can see these 15s, 20, 30 up here by the highway, right by the bridge, it's about 20, 25.
What, what it's actually showing is the, the cultural, part of the cultural center is within?
Yes. And it's, it looks like it's at an elevation of 30 feet. And right here is the boundary to the inundation zone.
Wait, I would reemphasize, this is really an approximation. You know, you're like, you're not going to be safe in the north end of the, of the cultural center if the south end is underwater. So this is, is really, you know, again, it's very, very inexact.
Well, the, the other part of the inexactitude is that when the tsunami occurs, it's going to occur following a major seismic event. And so you've got both of those phenomena that you're dealing with nearly simultaneously.
We don't want to steal the Dogami experts' offender here, but yeah, right. Yeah, he was saying in his opinion that we really did not need to put so much emphasis on the distant tsunami because that's going to be about what happened with the Japanese tsunami. We got a very small effect here on our coast, but the near tsunamis, of course, are the ones that are going to cause all the damage.
Can you, again, for clarity, mission members that don't have it dealt with, or can you clarify the?
Well, the near tsunami would.
Be like Dogami's thunder.
Okay, yeah, right. Would be, would result from an earthquake close in, either just offshore or, you know, of course, here.
Called a subduction zone earthquake, just offshore where the, the ocean plate is going under the continental plate. You know, it snaps, it'll create a tsunami, a huge earthquake potentially. And I guess they say that the earthquake is your tsunami warning. If you feel the earthquake, head for the hills.
And he talked about shaking for two to four minutes or something like that. So, you know, he was saying, do we actually need sirens because everybody's going to know what's happening? And he mentioned that following that, oh, about that, this moving of these plates is constantly building up energy and it's just, gets to a point where it sort of explodes. Yeah. And he said that when that happens, then the actual time period where we'll be threatened by the tsunami is, I believe, up to eight hours, maybe. And then, and then that danger is past and then you have to start dealing with the aftermath.
You have about 15 minutes to get to high ground and then for about the next eight hours, you have to be worrying about tsunami coming in because there will be multiple waves and so on.
Well, that's Captain Kooz at the Lincoln Fire has come up with a phrase called have friends in higher places.
Exactly, yeah. And actually, some people are arranging with their friends who live uphill from them, literally, to store their stuff up there. You know, got their emergency supplies and so on, so that they have a place to run to and food and equipment.
That was something that was just occurring to me because I know the city is contracted with, I can't remember the name.
Wade?
Yes.
In the Cutler City area.
That people could go there, but do we have any kind of emergency supply setup up there? Anything that could handle 100 people hanging around for?
I know, it seems like I heard about.
There is, I think there is a plan for that. I guess the first thing is, you know, you think of, the first thing is, you want to sur, you want to get to safety, you want to, you know, once you get to safety, then you worry about whether you can have food and water. The first thing is survive the tsunami.
I bet if we're cut off.
Well, it may.
There in Cutler.
And it may be something that Deborah could comment. There are drop locations in the city for food, for medical supplies, for fuel, for a variety of.
But south, south of the Schooner Creek Bridge, if there's, if there's a, you know, a subduction zone earthquake, the bridge isn't going to be there anymore. And so there's going to need to be, as you say, there's going to need to be food and water cached ultimately there.
And we'll become a bunch of islands. I don't expect any of the bridges to hold up and we'll be, become a bunch of islands. So.
As, as we move further south, we, we have a pretty good rise.
So, yes, along the coast, we've got a little, this is, this is the Canyon Drive Beach Access and then it, the tsunami area extends into the Agnes Creek. And there's no development in there, so that's fortunate. A lot of these lots that you see extending towards the beach are, for some reason, drawn so that they actually include beach area. So it's, but you'll notice that the buildings, for the most part, are at least west of the tsunami inundation area. Okay, this is 35th Street here and there is quite a bit of extension of the tsunami area up into this area, up to, this is 29th up here at the top. It's a little wider here, but it still seems to be representing, this must be, this is in its Spanish head.
Spanish head, yeah. There's the fire station.
And then, of course, you get down into the Taft area and this is all very low. This is about 10 feet elevation down in here. So that will definitely be affected. And again, you know, there is some commercial area in here, a lot of, well, this is all the Taft Village Core, which is mixed use, small shops and this is Mo's down here. And then out here in the yellow area, we get back into residential. For some reason, and maybe Richard can explain this one, why we have a commercial strip along 51st Street.
I cannot explain that.
Okay.
It's a mystery to me, it's something I've always wondered about.
That's across from the old grade school and so forth.
Grade school's right here. Grade school's.
Well, it's not a school anymore, of course.
And this is all on the creek side of 51st Avenue, Street. Okay, and then, of course, this, this is our tsunami inundation zone and it's to the east of the highway and Cutler City is included in the inundation zone. We have new maps coming out in September and our Dogami expert will be talking about that probably next time. At the meeting we attended, we saw new maps for Tillamook and Garibaldi.
Rockaway Beach.
Rockaway Beach.
Basically Tillamook County and up into Clansett County.
And they're doing a two-level tsunami maps now for the more frequent tsunami, but would be of lesser magnitude and then the, the big ones that don't happen very frequently, but when they do, we need to know where those lines are also. So they'll be sharing that information. I have a couple, one other thing that I want to mention. I went to a FEMA meeting yesterday and we were talking about special flood hazard areas and I think this came up last time we met. The National Flood Insurance Program and FEMA regulate properties that are in special flood hazard areas, but not in the tsunami area. But the good news is that people outside the special flood hazard areas who maybe are in the tsunami area or just, you know, anywhere in town for that matter, can buy flood insurance from the National Flood Insurance Program because of the city's participation and will be covered for flood damage from tsunamis if that should occur. So that's something to think about.
Well, if I could offer, is it something that we should be encouraging that people understand that that's available?
If owners, if owners feel that they are at some risk, either because they're in the inundation zone or because they are close to an inundation zone or close to a special flood hazard area, I would encourage them to look into it.
I should probably point out, if you're looking at the maps that Deborah was showing, the yellow areas and orange areas are, that's residential zoning. Most of the areas that are in the tsunami inundation zone are residential. The red is commercial and green is usually park or open space. So you can see that the yellow and orange is residential. The red is commercial and it's almost exclusively outside of the tsunami inundation zone there in Taft, except that part along Schooner Creek, which is, actually happens to be all developed residentially.
Down here.
Yeah.
But then this is all Ash, Taft Village Core, which also has a lot of commercial use in it.
Which is a commercial zone.
I could mention too that our, our urban growth boundary is this brown line that extends beyond.
That light green area is the wastewater treatment plant.
So when you begin to get new data that shows the best worst case and the worst worst case, then you begin to understand what percentage of your resources are potentially affected, whether they're R zones, C zones or whatnot. What do you do then? Is any, you know, you've been to some conferences, has anybody had a, an aha moment to say, now that we know, here's, here are some ideas?
Mostly you hear it's education and people should be aware and make their own decisions because the, the, like people are talking about, you build a structure that people can evacuate to that'll be above the tsunami level, just apparently isn't that viable solution for this area for some reason. That's what, that's what I was hearing. And it's, the aha is, you know, think about it before you, before you build your house there, is basically.
Well, you know, I think there, you know, obviously, we're going to, we're going to talk this thing for several months, if not years. But I think, you know, we're, we're fortunate in Lincoln City, say, as opposed to Tillamook or further up the coast, where we're not, if you look at the tsunami contour maps going north, they have some very substantial and serious issues.
Yeah, they go, they go way inland.
They go way inland. We have, we have a lot, as you said earlier, we have a lot of verticality here. And so while we'll no doubt be affected, we have built-in evacuation zones.
Right.
If, if people are really made aware of them and if they're really become part of the community fabric. In other words, if you've looked at some of the, the documents from Japan where they've actually embedded in their sidewalks and in their streets, arrows, not just the occasional little blue sign, but as you're, as you're doing your streets and sidewalks and as you're doing everything else, you embed the concept of evacuation to higher ground and you make it much more obvious than it is currently. But as I say, we, you know, we have a lot of this available to us just by debt of geography. But at the same time, we have a lot of space that is within these zones or adjacent to these zones that we would probably want to think about making the hazards more known if somebody came in to develop. Not just caveat emptor, but this is part of the information that you receive. This is, this is in fact, you know, let's say in the middle of an inundation zone. They can certainly make their judgment as to whether or not they want to proceed. But I think part of the obligation is to help them make informed decisions. Their decisions are theirs. The risk is theirs up to a point. But I think probably, you know, something as we discuss it, we want to think about is, is this something that we have a political and ethical obligation? I know putting those two words in the same sentence should cause heartburn, but is this something we, we want to begin to make people more aware of when they build, when they develop, when they buy? Granted, it saddles the underlying landowner with a burden, but we're talking, you know, you mentioned earlier, Richard, that most of the areas that are in the inundation zone. you mentioned earlier, Richard, that most of the areas that are in the inundation zone are residential, implies people, implies a lot of negative things that we want to, we want to be thinking about.
Right, definitely.
Low, low-density residential, or yellow on this map, is the lowest intensity and lowest density use that we have in the city. And so in that way, you know, maybe it is the most appropriate for an area where there is a hazard like this, as opposed to the brown, which is multifamily, or any of our essential services. And, you know, we are cognizant of that. The, we mentioned last time that the elementary school was moved from, from the inundation area in Taft.
About the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, it needs to be there to, you know, handle the sewage, you know, of course, downhill, so, yeah.
And when we begin to talk about planning, we talk about the broader sense of planning, not just people.
Uh huh.
As you say, infrastructure and support services. Do we, you know, in a planning window, begin to move our infrastructure resources away from those locations at the same time? I know we've done some of it with the schools, we've done some of it with the fire stations, we've done, you know, the police station, but we've still got other areas that we probably want to begin to push ourselves up.
Right. And it's one of those things that, that nothing, you know, that tons of money will solve, so, you know, it's, like, we've, the school district, you know, closed the Taft Elementary, which was, you know, great, and the fire district moved up the hill and so on, and the city's gradually moving things that can out of the inundation zone. For example, the new facility at the city shop has been to get some of the things from the wastewater plant, away from the wastewater plant and up onto higher ground. It's, I think, over time, more and more things like that will happen, I think. But, you know, it's, it's, a big part of it is money, you know, and it's, you hear about low probability, high consequence events, and unfortunately, this is not that low probability event. They happen here-
It's just low frequency. It's low frequency, but not low probability.
Yeah, yeah. They happen about every four hundred years, and the last one is four hundred and twelve years ago, so.
I don't know, when I went to graduate school, your probability with that statement went up logarithmically.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think, you know, as we, as we begin to talk about this, you know, we have, you know, or not we have, but you have in the, in the, in the planning jargon, longer-range planning documents that vision what the city will look like, and, you know, we incorporate those statements in our findings tenually. Does this project comport with that?
Uh huh.
And I think where I'm headed mentally is that in the next year or two, that we have some of this embedded into those standards, or visions, I guess, you know, a step back, such that we actively begin to ask those horny questions in the future as we review and plan for the community. It's not then something that is, oh, by the way, but it, but it becomes embedded in our culture and institutionalized, such that we, we put those questions out every time we look at an application, or a permit, or plan, or a bond issue, or anything else that we're given, you know, the nature of the potential event. You know, I know I'm asking for something that sounds like it's a lot of work with very little payoff, but I'm a firm believer in planning, you know, in mitigation. Part of that process is to avoid facing ourselves into hazards wherever possible. And in our, and I, you know, I think it's kind of like a motherhood and apple pie issue. It just, it, to me, is very worrisome that, that these events are not, the potential for these events are not better known, understood, and institutionalized.
The FEMA person who was talking yesterday was specifically talking about flood hazard zones, but it would also apply to the tsunami inundation area, and was recommending strongly that cities have a spreadsheet that includes all the properties that are in the flood hazard zone, or the inundation zone in this case, so that in the event of our, an event, in the event of an event, that we have as much information as possible available to us, so that we can go out and start assessing damage and that kind of thing. And so I thought that was an excellent idea. One more thing to put on our list of things to do.
Well, you, you know, you can move away from enforcement into the wild, wacky world of long-range planning.
Uh huh. Yes, have a comment?
Pat, you're mostly, or maybe you're not, I'm asking, are you talking mostly about, like, public facilities? Like, we've talked about the schools, the fire department, police department, things like that, or are we long-range planning, are we talking about, like, private development as well, like homes and businesses and things?
Well, I think that, more talking about homes and private business, because I think that there's a fairly high level of understanding, the emergency responder level, because you've seen the, the fire stations move, the police stations, you're seeing a lot of the city infrastructure, over time, might be out of the way. But I, I think in terms of the short-range planning, I'm talking about residential, residential, commercial, commercial, multifamily. And number one, making sure that we try to, wherever possible, not increase the potential population load in high-hazard areas. That we have some planning guidelines that say, this is an important thing, that we, wherever possible, will alter. Let's say we have a boundary there, and it curlicues around an undeveloped multifamily area. This multifamily area is clearly in the inundation zone. It probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense to leave that the way it is. It may make more sense to go back and redraw that map and reduce the density, and still leave development, but instead of, you know, twenty dwelling units per acre, maybe you go down to five, or something like that, so that you've mitigated the number of potential problems.
Man, I think that's, in theory, that's, we could run into some legal challenges if already purchased that property, you know, but I see what you're saying, I do.
It's the same way with businesses, you know, if somebody wanted to come in and build a very high-density business in a high-hazard zone, would it not have made more sense for us to change that zoning based upon best available knowledge to avoid that kind of, let's say, somebody wanted to put a football stadium, crazy thing, in a, in a high-hazard zone? You probably wouldn't, you were prudent, want to encourage that. You know, and I'm not saying these are ironclad, or they're even completely well-fought out, but I'm saying there ought to be some kind of a decision tree paradigm that we could follow in looking over properties that are in the inundation zones about changing the zoning to mitigate potential problems in the future.
I think there's a lot of that out there, Richard, that, I mean, there's a property out there that's, that is not single-family.
Um, well, yes and no. I mean, there's not that much undeveloped property within the city, but there may be underdeveloped, or property that's subject to redevelopment. For example, the perfect example is the old Taft Elementary School site. Right now, that gets very, very light use, but I could, I could certainly could see a developer seeing that, you know, it's great for development, it's level, and it's got city services, so it would be great for, for development.
There's, there's a complete flipside to the thinking also, which is, if, let's say, we identified ten percent residential housing units are potentially affected, then in terms of future planning, we ought to plan those to be replaced someplace else. But when we talk about land reserves in the future, that is incorporated into how we plan.
And to, the rest of that, my response is, of course, is the urban growth area is basically not developed, and a fair amount of that would be in the inundation zone, I believe, especially in the southern part of, of the city, or adjacent to the southern part of the city. But a lot of it is hillside, too, you know, it can be higher up and be safe, so it may be, maybe there should be-
Comes in.
Pardon me?
But we would have, as that develops, we have control.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, that is already there. Like, say, for example, there was a multifamily, purchased 2007, that's, say, eight, five, nine dollars, they all, who change their mind, one unit per acre, have a, I mean, that, I think, but-
Potentially, sure, yeah.
And, and again, all I'm suggesting is that, you know, over the next few months, that we come up with some way to think about those issues as we plan in the future, and that we're proactive about it, and we're moving in a direction that we all agree collectively makes sense, over the, you know, the five, ten, twenty-year horizon. Not that we need to do anything draconian today, you know, perhaps there are more awareness issues in the short term, that we need to, you know, help and encourage. And then in the long term, which is really more of our bailiwick, to begin to, you know, kind of move, you know, maybe five degrees away, where we will have a safer, sustainable community.
Yeah. We will-
Anybody else?
We'll be having ongoing conversations about this.
Good, good stuff. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number nine, reports and comments. Get over there, Richard, do you have anything?
I think at this time.
Deborah, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay, we have no city attorney. Planning commissioners.
I did have a quick question, and I don't know if that's going to be addressed here. It just came up at work. I have an employee who rides her bike, and there are no racks anywhere in the entire Nell Scott Strip, and I'm wondering, is that a city function to provide those, or is that up to the business owner? Where is that?
Certainly, business owners can provide them, but I don't, there is no city policy or practice of providing bike racks. Actually, that's one of the things we're looking at in the bicycle and pedestrian planning of promoting the bike racks.
Yeah. That's all.
I did have one issue that I circulated as a potential agenda item.
That's right, yeah.
And it didn't make it on the agenda this time, and that's fine, but what I, what I sent out an email on was the issue of code enforcement, and how that fits within our mandate. And the reason I raised that issue is, number one, I'm seeing, as I drive around town, a lot of properties that are suffering from neglect. And I also see a lot of land that has been zoned for use, that is now essentially abandoned to the knotweed, the scotch broom, and it makes, it, it makes the city look a little sad when you drive around and you see the, and it, it, I just would like to understand better what the city's position and plan is to try to get some of the owners of these properties to spiff it up a bit, so that it doesn't look like we're on our last legs in some spots.
We can put that on a future agenda.
And it may just be educational, I mean, if we don't have any particular thing to deal with, but some of that really looks sad, it really does.
Okay.
Plus, it adds to the fire loads.
You? Anybody else? Okay, nine point four, public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing, and we have no public. So, future agenda items in our next meeting, our next meeting is Tuesday, May 15, 2012, at 6:00 PM. We will-
I'm sorry?
Pardon?
You say we have a public hearing on addition to the Taft Elementary School, which is the old middle school, not the one down in the tsunami zone. We also will have the tsunami presentation from Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, and a presentation on parking standards.
Great.
Good stuff.
Thank you. And I believe that is it. We are adjourned.